Mr. Majority Leader.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we just remain in recess till 4:30 this afternoon.
Thank you. Legislature will remain in recess until 4:30. Legislature is back in session. I thank my colleagues for allowing us to take that short break to attend the historical event. I believe Senator Uggan, you had the floor.
Thank you very much and good afternoon to you, Mr. Speaker, and certainly hope that Speaker Wapatis will be feeling much better first thing in the morning. Mr. Speaker, I do have an amendment that has been proffered and if I can just -- I apologize because I just received it a minute ago. If I can just have one minute to run copies and then I will proffer it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
We'll recess. Legislature is back in session. Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you. I thanked the indulgence of the members of this body. Mr. Speaker, there's an amendment that's circulating that has the following individuals on top: yours truly, Rodriguez, Tony Ada, Espodan, McCready, Ruspecio. And that should have the --
Just for housekeeping, you've withdrawn the other one and you're submitting this one?
Yes, that's why I was going to put -- yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for that clarification. And this actually should also have Senator Barnes as one of the cosponsors. But the amendment is provided here. I did allude to the allocation of these particular funds to the respective entities to address ongoing issues that need to be addressed, whether they be operational or facilities. And these are all requests by the respective entities. It will take care of the halong overtime that has yet to be remitted and paid. It would identify the anticipated savings of up to $2 million to take 186,000 of that and allocate it and take care of our people who did work those extra hours during typhoon Halong. Also, it would allocate $200,000 to Typhoon Dolphin after the reconciliation between what FEMA is able to contribute in terms of their compensation of overtime. And then it would also address, last mentioned earlier, 150,000 to the Sinoon Mayor's office to assist in the completion of his overall funding that was provided by Gura. He has a number of projects that he's presently working on and he is in need of an additional 150,000 also that he can complete everything that was outlined in the specs. Also, 250,000 would be set aside or authorized for eventual expenditure for the compensation of farmers for crop damages based on typhoon dolphin. We also have 39,000 for the repair and the upgrade of the Talafauhulu baseball field, 273,000 for the repair of the pneumatic bridge towers, 100,000 for the Jonya -- the repair of the Jonya Gym facility, $400,000 to the Economic Development Authority for administrative fees, 401,000, which is the balance of up to 2 million, to the Guam Festback Festival of Pacific Arts for 2016. The added provision here, Mr. Speaker, and I just would like to remind our colleagues that this is an authorization for the expenditure of the anticipated savings and the funds identified herein shall be subject to legislative appropriation. Also, there's a sub item three, which notwithstanding Section Two of this act, the Guam Economic Development Authority fee shall be limited to the sum of $400,000 of the anticipated savings for the purposes of administrative fees. And that's to address some of the concerns that were raised a little earlier and discuss in regards to whether, in fact, GIDA should have held themselves off fees for the refinancing of these two bonds when, in fact, they were already -- they already had that opportunity to generate that at the inception. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask you for your consideration and the support of our colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I saw Senator Tom Ada's hand go up. Anybody else wish to speak on the other amendment? I mean, on the Uggan amendment? If not, Senator Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I certainly have no problems with the proposed expenditure of the anticipated savings from this refinancing. However, I do have a couple of questions. One is, of course, everybody, I guess throughout discussions, were anticipating that as a result of the refinancing, there will be a $2 million savings that will be available once the refinancing is done. But what do we do with now we have in the -- as further substituted bill on Section Five on page nine, already in there, it says that with the anticipated amount equal to the savings, that it will be basically earmarked for the GMH and for health-related expenditures. So, there's $2 million there. Then now we have this amendment here, which identifies another $2 million. So, what has happened so far is we want to refinance to obtain a $2 million savings, but before we've even had a chance to vote in the bill, we've already identified $4 million worth of savings. So, we need -- I think we need to look at that and find out, so where does the $2 million go to? And then the second question that I have is that everybody assumes that the savings is going to be $2 million. Well, in the Uggan amendment, it basically identifies $2 million worth of savings down to the last penny. But then what happens if only 1.9 million dollars is, in fact, achieved as a result of the refinancing? You know, it doesn't say that you would take, you know, item A and then C and then whatever fits into the 1.9 million. Now, maybe with that particular -- so with the Uggan amendment, maybe that concern could be addressed by putting in the language that the $2 million shall be authorized for the following expenditures in the following priority. So that if only 1.9 is, in fact, achieved, then you take the first 1.9 million dollars and that's, you know, then that's how you would basically disperse that amount. But even if we resolve this particular issue, the concern that I have here, there's still the question of $4 million worth of expenditures that have been identified to be funded by $2 million in savings. So, maybe first of all, for the Uggan amendment, I would ask maybe for the author of the amendment to comment on what happens if we don't, if we don't, in fact, get a $2 million savings as a result of the refinancing.
Do yield, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and to the good Senator. Very, very extremely valid questions, Mr. Speaker. If I can just allude to the first question that was raised as it applies to Section Five. He's absolutely right that that would have also extracted out of fiscal year '15 the $2 million. But because of the provision, the amendment that was adopted prior to entertaining this amendment, which stipulated that beginning fiscal year '16, then those savings that are realized shall be allocated according to Section Five. So, that would address the $2 million question as opposed to the $4 million that otherwise he alluded to as possibly being a requirement combining both this proposed amendment and the existing legislation. As it applies to the $2 million of the total list of projects, that's the figure that was provided to us by GIDA representatives that they anticipate, and he's absolutely right, this is an anticipation, but based on their number crunching, that they will, because they budgeted a certain amount for the payment of these two outstanding bonds, that once they have that opportunity to refinance, that they anticipate generating $2 million. Now, as it applies to how this $2 million will be allocated, should that not reach that figure, which I have every confidence in GIDA's personnel, but it's -- there's a caveat here that says the funds identified herein shall be appropriated by Elizabeth Turan Guahan. So, that's also the added mechanism for this legislative body to recognize what the anticipated savings is after the bonds are refinanced and then work with that particular figure. So, there are certain safeguards along the way that would address his very legitimate concern. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is that satisfactory, Senator Ada?
Well, I guess, okay, so, but I mean, we're basically just one yard short of the goal line here of actually appropriating. But I mean, if we were to vote for this today, we're basically saying that if tomorrow a bill is introduced to appropriate the savings from the refinancing, then our vote of yes today is committing already a vote of yes to the bill that would follow, which will be an appropriation of the savings. Not having had a public hearing, I, you know, for me to say today, yes, 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 and then tomorrow with new information, where, you know, when the day that the decision has to be made, I may have to say no, then I kind of feel like not really being genuine about my vote on this today. So, I appreciate the author of the -- the mover of the amendment clarifying that this is just an authorization, which really, however way you cut it, you know, it's, however, whatever color lipstick you want to put on it, it's still pig. And I'm not sure I'm ready to embrace that animal today because I don't know if I'm going to embrace it tomorrow with whatever new information might be available. Thank you.
To memorialize my objection, I will object to the amendment. Senator Sniklis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, this is exactly the kind of amendment not unlike the change that was also proffered in the further substitution of this bill, where we're continuously, of course, front-loading savings that haven't even materialized for projects that we can make a case are good, but that have not even been vetted against the opportunity cost of everything else out there that we need to pay for. The other concern I have, Mr. Speaker, is where these figures came from exactly, because I've never seen any estimates across my desk with respect to how much these things are. And on top of that, Mr. Speaker, a lot of these things are for certain areas that we've already authorized other funding sources for. I know that in the not-too-distant past, we had conversations about allowing certain special funds that are accumulating to be used for the renovation and repair of sports facilities, which make up most of these items on this list here. And so, if we already have a mechanism by which funds are going to flow through to fix those things, then is this the most prudent use of these savings versus all the other obligations that we have out there? And I just want to remind the body of what these obligations are. We still have our people pending a lot of tax refund payments. We still have vendors that are chronically 30 days past due. I mean, we've established that, not only in the Department of Education, but in the Guam Memorial Hospital, and even in the Department of Administration. I asked them to give me their list of vendors who are more than 30 days past due, and they told me to ask your office. And when I asked your office, they told me they can't access that unless DOE gives them access. So, obviously, that list must be long because they weren't forthcoming with it, but we have so many vendor payments that are due. And so, the question becomes, are we going to pay for these priorities or are we going to pay the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of vendors that we make wait? Yeah, these things are great, Mr. Speaker, but at what opportunity cost? What else could we have paid off with these savings? And in the conversation previous to mine, it was explained that if we're not going to spend the money in 2015 because it's already going somewhere else, then we're going to go and spend it in 2016. So, then we're already front-loading the first two years of savings? We haven't even saved a penny and we're already figuring out how to spend two years' worth of what we think we might save? And just to clarify for everybody, if you get a copy of the projection from GIDA, they show that we do have a 1.9 million projected savings in 2015, but a zero projected savings in 2016. Zero. Because of the way the debt service is structured here, the savings will accrue immediately, then there won't be any in 2016, but then it'll start accruing in 2017 and beyond. So, I really urge this body, before we rush to appropriate -- I know that, you know, it looks great to have your name on the bill or to say I introduced the amendment, but let's figure out how much money we're talking about first. And then after we figure out how much money we're talking about, let's wait against all the other priorities, things that are out there glaring, staring us in the face and calling us on the phone. It'd be wonderful for us to go out and say, hey, yeah, you know, you see that over there? I built that. That's great. You know, I would love to be the one to be able to go out and do that. Believe you me, Mr. Speaker, I know how to spend money, too. But in good conscience of what I feel is the fiduciary responsibility that's been entrusted on me by the people of Guam, I'm a very, very slow-to-spend senator. In my three years in being here, I think I've spent or I've introduced measures to spend not even 300,000. And that only appropriation measure I ever introduced, Mr. Speaker, was because Sanctuary was going to close their doors because they weren't getting the money they were supposed to get. And that was the only time I ever said, you know what, let's go find money and keep their doors open. It's not because I don't know how to spend. It's not because I don't want to take care of all these special groups that would benefit from something like this. But it's because, Mr. Speaker, if we're really going to commit to fixing the financial situation of our island, then we got to do it from the bottom up. We can't go out there and say we're going to spend the first 2 million, the first 4 million that were projected to save of the first 50 million before we've even begun saving it. I mean, all the way down to the penny, Mr. Speaker, this amendment is trying to figure out how to spend in favor of one group or another. And the previous speaker had a very good point. What if we're off by a penny? Or $10, or $100, or $100,000? Then who's going to get paid what? And that's why, you know, this whole idea of, oh, it's an authorization, it's not yet an appropriation. So, basically, we're going to go and promise people that we're going to spend money for them that we don't even know we're going to have? And then when we don't have it, what? We go back and say what? Ah, yeah, I meant to go build you that gym, or I meant to go fix that field, or I meant to go put up that, you know, whatever, but, oh, yeah, it didn't come in, so, yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't do it. And that's where all these new things, how do we look our schoolchildren in the face come September and say, I couldn't put a textbook in your backpack? I don't know how much more clearer, Mr. Speaker, I can make the chain of events that I try to very, very clearly set us on. But if we really want to make those things different for our community, if we really want to make those things a reality, like schoolbooks for our kids and working toilets in their school restroom and a mass transit system that actually accomplishes its mission or fixing Route Ford in Arahan or addressing the flooding in Agit, getting us out of receivership, whether it's DOE or the dump, all kinds of things, Mr. Speaker. And yet, before we even begin saving a penny, we're already rushing to spend it on other areas. And it adds up. The raises in November was about 2 million bucks. That's 2 million. Plus this 2 million in 2015, that's 4 million. Plus, if we push everything forward to 2016 or 2017 for another 2 million, that's $6 million. $6 million, Mr. Speaker. How much does it cost to get the textbooks? 14? We're already halfway there. So, I join you in objecting to the amendment, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues, you know, this isn't the first time that we found money somewhere and we immediately tried to appropriate. And you know what really makes it so tough as a senator? I don't want to be the one to say no to all these really, really good people and all these really, really good things, because, man, if you get out there and people come back to you and say, hey, you know, man, you got to watch out because they're saying you don't support the baseball. They're saying you don't support the children. They're saying you don't support the culture. And that's absolutely not true, Mr. Speaker. And that's why it's very, very difficult to take these kind of positions, because all of us don't want to be put into that kind of a category or classified like that. But the reality, Mr. Speaker, is 2 million to 4 million to 6 million, it all begins adding up. And that's why we end up spending 800 million dollars in this government and we still don't have textbooks in the backpacks of our schoolchildren, because a million went here and a million went there. You know, tomorrow, we're going to be having a hearing on another agency that has a very cash-rich budget, from which we've made multiple appropriations over the course of the last 12 months for other things again also. And so, we need to ask ourselves, Mr. Speaker, are we all going to have that kind of leadership style where we're going to come together and say, okay, you're going to help me with this, I'm going to help you with that, you're going to do this, you're going to do that? Or are we going to sit back and say, what has been the problem for so long and how are we going to pull the resources from wherever we're going to be able to pull it in order to fix that problem? Textbooks is not a yesterday problem, Mr. Speaker. That's been all the way back since I was in school. And so, when? We can pick up the phone anytime there's an extra dollar lying around and we can find somewhere to spend it. Or we can step back, run these things through the Committee on Appropriations, have public hearings, let our people come in and speak about them, and reflect on the fact that we have these legacy issues that are never going to get fixed until their leaders start saying, you know what, we're going to fix them. But it's not going to happen if we keep allocating every single penny that we're able to find somewhere into something else. As nice and as much as it feels good and as much as we can justify it and say that it's a good thing or whatever, we got things that we need to take care of that have been staring us in the face for so long. So, I implore this body to please think about that and understand that that's why this original bill that I introduced did not have any appropriation measures in them, because we need to sit back and go through the motions of exactly how much we're going to have. And once we figure that out so we can deliver on the promise we're making, then appropriate it within the context of everything else that's out there that we need to take care of. Those problems are not going to go away. The schoolbooks aren't going to magically appear in the kids' bags. Receivership isn't all of a sudden going to be something that's no longer sucking money out of our general fund. The restrooms aren't all of a sudden going to walk in and fix themselves. Roads aren't going to fix themselves. The problem that we have of getting refunds paid out faster isn't going to fix itself. Vendors aren't going to get paid any faster until we start committing the resources to actually doing those things, Mr. Speaker. They may not fund the pet projects that somebody might want, but they are the community problems that we are required to solve as true public servants. And I implore us to take on that mandate, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on the Uggan amendment? If not, there's been two objections. All those in favor of the Uggan amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Amendment passes. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill, on the main motion? On the main motion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, there was an inquiry about where some of these numbers originated from, so I do have some documents that reflect exactly what the outstanding overtime is, what the cost structure for some of these. So, just for the information of our colleagues that they would like that information, I do have it readily available. These are not numbers that were arbitrarily pulled out. Thank you.
Anybody wish to speak on the motion, on the main motion? Senator Sniklis.
Just a point of order, Mr. Speaker. Is this my main motion still or is it another's main motion because it was substituted?
Well, no, it's the bill that we have before us as further substituted.
Okay, so who's going to close on the bill?
It would -- it's yours still.
Okay, I'll reserve my comments for closing.
Any other senator wish -- Senator Blas, here.
Mr. Speaker, with all due respect, I think that the motion he brought, the main bill to the floor, the motion is the acceptance of the substitute by the good Senator Rodriguez. So...
I'll consult parliamentarian. She was the one that said it was still his. But we'll take a short break and I'll consult with parliamentarian.
Because I think that he still has the floor on the main motion. The motion is to accept his bill.
It, I believe it was accepted.
Can we just, just to clarify, please? I just want to make sure that... I sent corrected. I thank the -- yeah. Thank you. Thank you to Leo Consol.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, Senator Sniklis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, we've, we've come to the, to the end of discussion on Bill 130 that I've introduced. Originally, this bill was introduced for the sole purpose of just refunding the bond and saving our people between one and two million dollars a year over the life of the existing debt. Since that time, the bill has been substituted, amendments have been placed into the legislation, and now it's not only about savings, but it's also about...
Thirty-second recess, please, I, 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 do, do it, I'll just, because I need to speak to the speaker on, on a certain matter.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So as I was saying, the original version of this bill as introduced would have just put forward a measure that would have saved our people between one to two million dollars a year. After that savings has been realized, then we could have introduced other measures to figure out where we're gonna spend it and how we're gonna prioritize it. Instead, what has happened is that the bill that I introduced was further substituted and it included language that would have resulted in the double payment of fees that